Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and for those who have passed away in our community, especially Michael Scanlon, Michelle Anne Jeffers-Laroz, and to our colleague, Bill King. We are all deeply saddened to hear about the passing of your father-in-law, William Healy. Please accept our heartfelt condolences, and know our thoughts and prayers are with you and Lynn and your family at this difficult time. And know we are here for you, to support you in whatever way you may need. Thank you. Roll call, please.
President.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. Smurl?
Here. Dispatch with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A. Lackawanna County Planning Commission Subdivision and Land Development Evaluation Report received January 13th, 2024. 3B. Ministers of the Scranton Firefighters' Pension Commission Meeting held December 18th, 2024. 3C. Ministers of the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Commission Meeting held December 18th, 2024. 3D. Agenda for the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting held January 15th, 2025. 3E. Ministers of the Scranton Police Commission Meeting held December 18th, 2024. 3F. Ministers of the Composite Pension Board Meeting held December 18th, 2024. 3G. Controller's Report for the month ending December 31st, 2024. 3H. Municipal, Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority November 2024 Meeting Minutes received January 13th, 2025. 3I. Correspondence dated January 13th, 2025 from the Business Administration regarding a Department of Public Works Budget Transfer. 3J. Ministers of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority Meeting held December 19th, 2024.
Are there any comments on any of the third-order items?
I just had one comment. So if we notice 3B, the minutes that were included tonight show a failed vote due to the fact that it wasn't an, there was an even number of members on the pension board. So I'd like to make note of it that the mayor needs to immediately seat an individual to represent the retired Scranton Fire Departments because they're not being represented on this board at this time. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Anyone else? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a quick one. So I would like to recognize and show my appreciation to DPW, Scranton Fire and Police Departments, code enforcement, and our crossing guards for braving the elements and serving our residents during this arctic blast. I just want to thank them, and just to hang in there, guys. It's supposed to warm up at the end of the week. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention the Scranton Ice Festival had taken place this past weekend, and I thought it was a, it was a really great weekend for it, aside from the snow that we had gotten on Sunday. But, you know, it was great to see all the businesses that had participated, and I was glad to have made it down, and there were some things for kids as well. So just wanted to thank, you know, Scranton Tomorrow, and in partnership with the county, that they put that on. So I think it's a great winter event.
And I have one. Waldorf, German-American Federation, as the night of the races up on East Mountain. It's Saturday, February 1st, 2025. Doors open at 5:30.
Fourth order, citizen participation.
First, Joan Hodeanis.
Joan Hodeanis, Scranton. According to the weather forecast for tomorrow morning, it's going to be two degrees below zero. Now, I assume there's a cold blue in effect. Here's what I don't understand. It's my understanding that all the shelters, you can go there, but you have to leave at eight in the morning. I don't think it's going to be very warm at eight o'clock in the morning for the homeless. Has anybody tried to reconsider, or, you know, in extreme conditions like this, we just turn them out of doors? It'll probably be zero at eight o'clock in the morning. It's maybe something you want to sit and discuss. It's a public safety issue, and I don't want to read in the paper or see on the evening news that we found a corpse frozen to death. And I think, you know, a situation like this, that's possible. So the ball is in your court. Last week, I asked about the pay raises for city council, since there are three seats open this year, and two are not. So if you vote city council a pay raise, does that mean that next year, three people would get the pay raise and two would not?
Joan, again, that is with our attorney and with the city attorney to kind of decipher that. I believe the last time it happened, everyone got the raise.
I understand that.
But the way it reads, it doesn't read quite like that. It reads a little differently.
The city has a tradition of ignoring the Home Rule Charter, and in the Home Rule Charter, it says, "You shall not do that." So hopefully, you'll get a clear answer before this goes to a final vote. Okay? Look at the optics. I mean, here you are, you know, you've got a pay raise coming, the mayor's got a pay raise coming. I don't know. You know, is this, that question needs to be answered. And if you're going to ignore the Home Rule Charter, then belly up to the bar and amend the charter. But can't keep ignoring it like Chinese men, you know, take a little bit from this column and a little bit from that column. Shouldn't work that way. It says you shall not get a pay raise if you're still, your elected term is still continuing. So you can't, you can't have your cake and eat it too. Either only three people get a pay raise, or you amend the charter. That's my opinion. Speaking of opinions, what's going on with the Commonwealth Hospitals? Anything in the wind?
No news yet.
Okay. Hopefully, it's not going to come down like a bombshell. And I would assume that the collective bargaining negotiations are still ongoing for DPW.
Yes.
Because their contract ended on December 31st.
Yes.
And I noticed that Mr. Uffberg picked up, what was it, a tidy $37,000 in December. So I see the work coming. And are we working aggressively on the 2024 audit, now that the 2023 audit has been put to bed?
Yes, I will get an update from Matt at the end of the month.
Okay. And I do want to compliment DPW with the recent weather. I did see them out cleaning the downtown streets, which was great. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Les Spindler?
Evening, Council. Les Spindler, City Resident Homeowner. Couldn't make it last week, but I watched on TV. I couldn't believe about these raises. The mayor wants to give herself a 26% raise. That's unbelievable. And Council wants to give themselves raises now too. Meanwhile, she wants a 26% raise, the people of Park Gardens get their rent raised 30%. Something's wrong with that picture. Those people, they're probably on fixed incomes, and they get a 30% rent hike? That's ridiculous. Yet she wants a 26% raise. I don't see what the hell's going on there. Next thing. People came to this podium, they blasted Joe Biden for pardoning a corrupt judge, which I don't agree with. I don't think he should have done it. But what Donald Trump did today is a thousand times worse than what Joe Biden ever did. He pardoned 1,500-plus people responsible for January 6th. And they talked to one guy on the news tonight. He spent 90 days in jail. And he said he deserved it, because he said police officers died that day. And Donald Trump, he, he makes it seem right that police officers died. It's unbelievable. It's our nation's capital, and that was attacked, and he's pardoning these people. He, "Make America Great Again" is his motto. That's really making America great again. Attacking the Capitol and having police officers killed. Well, let's make America great again, Donald. Keep freeing all the murderers. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Les. Ron Elman? Ron? Come here, wait.
Hello, Council. And God bless our new president. Now, listen to me for the next five minutes, please. At the new Parker Street Bridge, and for you that don't know, it's supposed to be opening this week or next. They're through with it. To the north is a small grassy outlet that was home to four or five properties years ago, before the flood control took them. Because of this small area, it was really just unusable for anything. And the city's taking care of it, planting grass and cutting it over the years. This property was a beautiful 100-year-old tree, probably well over that, according to Tony, who, he recognized it as a city landmark. This tree was deliberately destroyed under the order of Joe Cochrane, probably for Christmas money, according to the workers there that were doing that. I don't know how it was paid with flood control money, or city money, or what. I've wondered. Well, out of the blue last year, Joe Cochrane decided to buy this useless little piece of land, about, probably smaller than a football field. Anyway, that made it his tree, I guess. Now, why did he buy this? Because some blabbermouth at PennDOT released the information that they were going to take a three-year lease to park their equipment, cars and so forth, to work on the bridge there. This money was supposed to be going to us, the city. But Joe Cochrane had purchased the property. In my humble opinion, no. I think this was nothing more than insider trading, period. Insider trading is unlawful. Members of our Congress and Senate were convicted of such. This area was really messed up, but Tony, Tony told me that PennDOT's going to clean it up. Unless the council is fearful of doing so, there should be an immediate investigation of any of my allegations. Who allowed this sale? This illegal use of residential property? Where'd the money go? There's a large sum of money here. My friend can't find it on his computer, what went on. People, this city is just so without any leadership. The state should investigate this fraud going out in crooked Scranton, right under your noses, the mayor's noses, and most of the population's noses. It's, it's, just one more example that I've been saying three or four times. This sour stench of graft and corruption is just at home in this city. It's time, it's time for the people out there to start thinking of a new government. November will be here awful fast. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elman. Lee Morgan?
Ron Elman. Not very bad for an 88-year-old man. The first thing I have here is, in February, I believe it's in February, people can go to voter registration and get petitions and run for the three vacant council seats and the mayor's position. It's really time for a major change in this, in this city. I agree with Ron. You know, over the years, Tom Invarski came here, he was close to 90 years old and blind, did the best he could. Andy Spragula could take the budget apart and talk about it at length at any time. Ozzy Quinn, we sat here, we had meetings here, the tax group. And a long time ago, a gentleman by the name of Jack Fawcett came here and spoke. All these people are deceased now. You know, it's, it's just, you have to look at the residents, because they've condoned this corruption for all this time. You know, I tried to talk about the Home Rule Charter and rewriting the charter, but then I was locked out at ECTV because Chris Kelly and the Board of Directors and the mayor didn't like, in my opinion, liked my opinion, so they locked me out of the channel. And when you read the history of the peg channels and what they were designed to do, and what's happened to them, I just have to say to the residents, we've lost this, we've lost the Scranton Times newspaper. We've lost every free outlet to the public. We have five minutes here to talk about the graph and corruption here in the Scranton School District, and everything is broken. And if you listen to what the President of the United States just said, and you see that Joe Biden pardoned his whole family, the January 6th Committee, everybody you can imagine, because the government is so corrupt, there's almost nothing left. And the American people, for one, stood up and said, "We've had enough," and they swept it all clean. Even in Pennsylvania, there's been a major revolution in the upper echelons of Pennsylvania's government, because we've got to get rid of these corrupt Democrats. All of them, including this council, you know? We had, there's a sign out there for whistleblowers. They want a whistleblower to come here and talk about any problems they had. We had one in licensing and inspections. She told this council everything that was going on there, and the mayor. I mean, as a matter of fact, Tom Invarski, I guess, is your good friend, Mr. Smurl. I mean, you know, you patronize his business. He, it was illegal. They were allegedly selling permits up there. You don't care at all. And the residents of Scranton, you know, you've brought this decline on yourself. But the city's just a complete mess. Let the thing going on at Park Gardens? I don't know why that took so long for the city to retire it, and there was no reason for the raises. You know, people talk about rents. The government's driving the cost of rents. Look what they did to the sewer authority and the water rates. And I brought in a jug here full of water. You can't even drink it. When you look at your filters at your house, it's a mess. You councilmen do nothing for the residents of this city, except pass grant money around and borrow. But as far as the average, everyday Scrantonian, they get nothing from you. And to talk about a spaghetti dinner and all the other silliness, you know, they look to you for some answers. And you know, the council and the mayor are the supposed to run the city together, and it's not happening. And it hasn't happened in my lifetime. And the city's been in decline forever, because the residents of Scranton think that somebody else is going to come save them, and it's not going to happen. We need the change here, like the one we had in Washington, and we do need major investigations. We need somebody to come in here, and I intend to write the two senators in Pennsylvania and the newly-elected congressman, and ask for an investigation at ECTV and the council. Okay? Because something has to be done here, and the Board of Directors of ECTV has to be removed, and the management of ECTV needs to be terminated. And somebody needs to get elected to the mayor's office and make these changes, because we have a corrupt council and a corrupt mayor, in my opinion. And you should care that the people have an outlet to speak about what they want done in their city, because that's what public access TV was created for. Read the legislation that came from Washington that made it happen. And the last question I have is, where's the $1.5 or $6 million a year that they get from ECTV that should go to the public access channel? Where does that money go, besides the money from the sale of the sewer authority, as I've asked you, Mr. Smurl, because you're a legislator? Tell the residents of this city where all that money went.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Jim Warren?
Good evening, Council. Jim Warren, resident of Scranton. First, I want to thank the council for getting back to me within the week of the questions that I presented two weeks ago with what was going on with the construction in the parking lot for Izzy's in the giant plaza that's disrupting Izzy's business and all the businesses in the area. So I appreciate that. He was able to help us look further and to see what we could do to help the area. Tonight, I wanted to bring up the bridge also. I mentioned it briefly last time. The bridge project that's happening on Green Ridge Street near Main Ave, it, that's just starting, and that's probably going to cause a little more disruption than the construction in the parking lot has. They've already cut off Naug Avenue behind the plaza to get out onto Green Ridge, and then recently, they're getting out of the plaza as now two lanes instead of three lanes, and it's getting really congested in there. I hear complaints all the time. People just don't even want to come into the plaza. It's greatly affecting our businesses, and I would just humbly ask that the council would look into grant money to, to help for some type of aid for all the businesses in that area. For example, the Family Dollar, their, their parking lot, most of their parking lot has been taken away for the bridge program. And I know the bridge, it, it needs to be done. It's just, what can we do to help the businesses that are affected by it? Okay? Same thing with the water company, the tree, the sewer, sorry, stormwater collection that's being done. I think it's a great program. It's helping the city. It's helping our river and our natural resources. But if, you know, if anything could be put in place to help the businesses affected, we would all appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all for our signing sheet. Anyone else wish to address council?
Good evening, Council. Virgil Argenta. Mr. King, I'm sorry about your father-in-law.
Thank you.
Several issues to address tonight. Has anyone from council addressed the issues regarding the fire department's pension board? Seriously, seriously represented that. Meeting with the mayor, trying to forcefully get her to do something. The issue of the unfilled vacant retired member seat, that has only been an issue since 2022. The fire union president has been there numerous times requesting your help. Does anyone have an answer for him? Two new members were appointed by the mayor in June of 2024. Their terms expiring in 2027. That didn't seem to be a problem for the mayor, unless she does not want to give retirees the raise, raises that they deserve. Or maybe there's an issue with the fire superintendent and the pension fund. These are only my thoughts. Having this seat filled would give the retirees representation, and it would break any ties against them. There was a tie again last week. Remember, there's no cost to anyone to fill this empty seat. Is there a reason this council will not stand up and forcefully demand the mayor to fill that seat? Some of you are up for reelection. Will you come looking for the fire votes? The Business Administrator received an engagement letter from the Pennsylvania Auditor General's Office notifying the city. DAG's office will begin a compliance audit of the city's aggregate pension fund on June 6th, 2025, for the period of June 1st, 2022, to December 31st, 2023. Do you know if they're looking for anything specific? The Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority will be taking $150,000 loan out for five years at a payment of $3,300 a month. They will be putting down a $22,000 down payment from the Fidelity Bank. Do we know what this loan is for? We saw what happened with loans being taken out with authorities. Look at Park Gardens, where we're at. Do we know what the interest rate is on this loan? Remember, they chased away Villa Capri. They'll no longer be bringing funds into the authority. Do we know if all the city pension funds are current and up to date with their contributions? And now that we're going into a new year, do we know if all city employees are working at City Hall and that no one is working remotely from home any longer, including the Controller's Office? Has anyone checked the validity of the true, real nonprofits in the city, as promised months ago? Has the mayor discussed with anyone on her new vice president role, with the mayor's alliance leaders, where No Kid Goes Hungry Organization? Do we know if she'll receive a salary from this position? Do you know if she talked to anybody with the school board? Who knows better about struggling children than the school directors or the teachers? The ARPA program. Do we have a status report on the positives or negatives of all the grants that were given out for the ARPA program? Do we know how many businesses are still in business in the city from that ARPA program? How about a list of businesses that took the money and equipment and ran? Do we have an enforcement program in place? Do we plan on going after any of these businesses? Can we recoup any of those funds? Jackson and Main. The gateway, one of the gateways, the West Granton. There's been a vehicle there for two years on the Jackson Street side. It's been expired since four of 20. There's no bumper, and all the tires are flat. It's an 80-something blue Honda. Pennsylvania registration, M Mary, H Hotel, C Charlie, 4262. How much longer is that going to stay there? One last thing. There's been a rash of cats being abandoned and tied to trees at the Waspin Street Cemetery. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Argenta.
Good evening, Council. Mike Mancini, Scranton. Mr. King, my condolences to you and your family.
Thank you.
I'm very sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Thank you to our strong DPW crews who have worked in these elements, along with the cold temperatures. Cold Blue has been activated for those left in the cold weather, 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Where do they go during the day while the wind chill is well below freezing? Did you know that the city determines who is homeless by getting returned surveys? You've had so many homeless people because we offer more than most. How about taking care of our own first? There are over, well over 150 children enrolled in the Scranton School District that are currently homeless. The answer from the mayor was to stop the unhoused commission back in April, because there was public input. She didn't even lead in the Pledge of Allegiance. She doesn't care. Last week, we could not hear Dr. Rothschild, who had dialed in. Rick Little actually who had dialed in. Rick Little actually asked if she was under the desk. We couldn't hear her. Mr. Schmerl stated that we will have her repeat herself this week. I would like to make a recommendation, a motion to get rid of the dial-in option. Each of you was elected to lead. You cannot do so by not being here. Last week, Mr. King indicated that he will not seek reelection. Mr. Schmerl, would you be seeking reelection? Crickets. As a mouthpiece for the mayor, we would all like to know what your intentions are. If you do run and lose, and by the way, that's not a prediction, that's a spoiler, when you lose, we return the key to Naug. That's a good question. Yeah, well, you're going to have to at some point. For those of you who don't know, Naug was going to have a splash pad, no pools. The first phase is pickleball. That's more important than pools. Has the $3 million been secured to add the pools? We lost that grant. When will families and children be able to create memories of those pools once again? Kids don't want splash pads or pickleball. Kids want pools and basketball courts. Kids want the South Side Steelers Youth Football Program to be brought back. Kids want a future in Scranton. Studies, consultants, corruption. That's what the good people of Scranton witnessed over the years. Wasted money, poor planning, laziness, lack of effort. These are some of the things that we have endured as of late from this expansion team. The mayor mentioned that those who questioned this street formerly known as Spruce are just making a name for themselves. We ended up stuck with her over a Tuscan chicken sandwich. She's trying so hard to make a name for herself. People know me, they don't know her. Those in Green Ridge certainly know her pretty well. After the, not showing up for the issues pertaining to park gardens or the 45 properties that were questioned with the Meadow Brook Creek Project, they're actually gutting Pretzel Park, careless with the truth to those of Green Ridge twice. Her answer to crime is a holistic approach. She targets veterans like they're a gang. Shows up to photo ops with that smug look on her face, as if it was more than just a fart. She's from Beaverton, Oregon. The only approach I see from her is Giordiasis. That's all I see from her, this parasite and this expansion team, a whole bunch of crap. The best way to fix things is not from out of town. Now we have out-of-town problems. Scranton will fix Scranton. We will make Scranton great again. Change is coming. Good evening, counsel.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Tom Coymanuka. First thing I'm going to touch off on what the last speaker just said. The phone-in, a phone-a-friend is an unfortunate thing that's in the law now, that we don't have the ability to actually confront and look at the reactions of our lawmakers when laws are being put across this body. When they don't show up, for whatever reason, they shouldn't be voting. They should be here before the public to represent the public and to see the opinions and the faces of the people they represent standing before this podium. The time I see phone-a-friend the most is when it's going to come down to a three-to-two vote. When if, when if it's not a, a member is out, it's going to be a two-to-two and, and it's going to die. Then we get the phone-a-friend to protect the three-to-two margin. It's not a surprise. It's regular. Now then, on to the raises. We know that $75,000 for this area is a lot, no matter how long we use excuses of years. Since 2021, local wages risen for the population $8,000 in 13 years per capita. From 20,000 to 2022, 22 years, people got $12,476 in average. Yet for those 22 years, we want to make an excuse that the mayor somehow should get more because she hasn't gotten raises, or he, or whoever is going to be in the next position. It's fantastic when you go to look at numbers and comparative to cherry pick the backup you want to, you want to push as your objective. Why not just say a $20,000 raise from the population of 76,000 is just 26 cents a year from everyone, less than a cup of coffee? Because we paid over $80,000 for an unapproved light contract in Naug Park, $30,000 for an unpaid Rubicon, for an unapproved Rubicon purchase, $36,686 so far in extra trash fees that are growing, 146,000 reasons, and that's just scratching the surface. Wilkes-Barre's mayor annual salary set by ordinance is 82,000. But he only accepted $60,000 in declined healthcare coverage, saving the city another $30,000 annually. Want to throw out numbers? Clark's Greens mayor gets $1,800 a year. Forest City, 900 a year. It's easy to cherry pick. But beyond spending federal money, what has the mayor done to improve Scranton? Not pickleball courts, not tearing down slides and having three separate surveys for a pool to try and push it along and then not have the funding. Moving on, we have three buildings that collapsed, the facade on them. Coney Island, the one straight down the street here, that the skin fell off it. And that's understandable with Coney Island. It was being remodeled, and there is some variance in that. But we also had on the corner of Clearview and North Lincoln Avenue, just before 4:00 PM on the 26th, a collapse directly next to Neil Armstrong Elementary School. Now, this building has almost no setbacks. It's a multi-rental unit. I question if it was inspected and if the inspection addressed the outside structure. After all, it has multiple rental properties in it. I figured that the outside structure of a building that has seen multiple repairs might be something that licensed inspection might have attention to. Thankfully, it was on the 26th of December, or it would have fallen on the children who were exiting the school or children nearby because it collapsed on the public sidewalk. Again, in the past year, what has the mayor done for public safety, for the people, on shootings? Parks unlocked and unmonitored, buildings falling on people and the homeless, the mayor exhibiting compassion of someone kicking a dog. It is not who we are. This is the results. The results are what we deserve for a raise and to consider one. I'd like to wait until someone can show cause beyond spending grant monies on why the next mayor deserves a raise. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, counsel. Rick Little here. We just allegedly had a new president sworn in. And I, I've been a student of this for a long time, you know, about the oath of office. Everybody who has an office has an oath of office. Every police officer, every, every public servant, they have to sign a thing. We, we come here, and we say the Pledge of Allegiance, we have a little prayer. And then I'm reading everywhere about, oh, Trump didn't have his hand on the Bible, or, or, or all this stuff. Well, I'll say it again. Like Lee Morgan was saying, there's just no communication. We're living in a bubble because everything in the Times Tribune virtually is the AP or the New York Times, which time and again has been proven to be just fake news, false reporting. I, I've been to Washington like 10 times all my life. I went with the Boy Scouts once, and, you know, we got into every, every agency and everything. I've been thinking about this stuff a long time, especially ending the Fed, you know, which was basically Ron Paul's book from 1992. And nobody seems happy because yesterday, Trump ended the Fed. He ended the Fed. The Internal Revenue Service, it's an offshore bank. We're dealing with banks, and now it's going to be the External Revenue Service. People should be very happy, and they certainly were happy in Washington. I, I went down there yesterday. These pardons of Joe Biden, especially of Fauci and Milley, so many people are dead because of them. And I'm reading in, in the Times Tribune, what I'm really reading is the AP, is, is that, you know, Fauci, 40 years, and the National Institute of Health, and Milley, the former chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff. A lot of people are dead because of, because of these people. And we're living in, in, you know, the hometown of Joe Biden. What happened was, is, is that, you know, getting back to, to the Bible, the swearing in, and the evidence that I saw yesterday, he didn't have his hand on the, on, on the Bible because he was already sworn in. I've heard that he was sworn in at the White House midnight, Sunday night. I've heard this and that. There's all kinds of confusion all around about what this is. But it really comes down to the United States of America Corporation, which was established in like 1876. And I think you'll, you'll hear more about that. Now, locally, I hear all this stuff about the Police Department and everything. And I, I get food stamps. And I understand from my case worker that, that at 2:33 in the morning, something like that, it was put onto my food stamps, which is a federal program, the SNAP program. It's administered through the state of Pennsylvania, through the county of Lackawanna. And I'm talking to the guy, and he goes, well, there's nothing we can do about it. Go down to the Scranton Police Department and make a report. Well, I did that today, you know. But I know there's no jurisdiction with, with the Scranton Police Department. He, they told me, you know, like 12 people, there's a lot more than 12 people who got, got aced out, out of their, their food stamps. And I said to him, I said to the caseworker, like, who told you this direction? And he, last week, he said he was going to send me the computer thing showing that I spent in Richmond, California at 2:32 at a store called Mom and Pop &amp; Sons in Richmond, California. That's where my federal money went. There, and I said, why didn't you call, why didn't somebody from your office call? The Lackawanna Compass Office or somebody? Why didn't you call the inspector general or the attorney general? They had no answer for that. I guess my time's up. But we, we gotta.
Thank you.
We gotta get it in.
Anyone else?
TJ Fitzgerald.
I'm sorry, sir. Your name and address?
TJ Fitzgerald. Taxpayer federally, state, I'll speak in any place.
Do you live in the city of Scranton?
I don't have to. As long as you receive federal funds or state funds, I'm actually a taxpayer, so I am legally allowed to speak in any, any place that receives taxes from me.
Attorney Gilbreth, explain that to me.
We, we just passed it in Luzerne County, and council said that, that's a fact.
Well, we're not Luzerne County. Number one, we don't follow Luzerne County rules. We follow our rules. It's not the Sunshine Act. It's a different law. But.
I mean, I'm not going to be mean. I just have a, you know.
I'm sorry. It's, it's simply not allowed. It's in the rules. I, I can't change them for you.
Well, the, I just want to thank the city of Scranton because I did have a remove-and-replace rally for the Biden. I, I see that's a big issue here. I just want to know, the petitions that I got are over 100. Who can I give them to?
All right. Sir, I'm, I'm sorry. You don't live in the city.
And then, and then.
Thank you.
The other thing is.
Is there anyone else?
Is that.
Sir.
The, after I can figure out who I could give the petitions to.
Sir, you're out of order.
Just wondering if there was any reason.
You're out of order. Please.
Any reason that you could find out that you.
Which, which is the size?
Sir, you're out of order. Please. I will have the officer remove if you don't see something. Okay.
Give the petitions to the cap.
Hmm?
We want to take the petitions.
Take what? Oh. You want, you want to give something to our assistant city clerk? That's fine. But you can no longer speak. Thank you. Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else?
That's from the staff.
Mr. Volenberg?
Fifth Order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
I would like to reiterate, thank you to the DPW for having.
Sir.
For having to get out and work.
Please. Officer, will you remove? You're disrupting the meeting again. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. King.
Sorry. I just want to mention, as was mentioned earlier, about our DPW during these storms and, and all this freezing cold weather. I see they're out there doing a great job, working hard in difficult conditions, as well as our, our police and firemen. And I just appreciate, you know, their, their efforts because it's not easy to be out there for eight hours in, in this type of condition. And I just want to thank them for their work. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Hughes, any motions or comments?
I'll also reiterate, thank you for the DPW for the, the snow removal and cleanup, as well as salting during the snowstorm that we just had. I did ask on January 7 about city recycling. So I asked if we proposed that if the city administration had looked into the cost benefit analysis about recycling and what our next steps are going to be. The answer that I received was that the city has previously provided data on the cost of recycling. The city is required by state law to provide the recycling services to the residents, which the state statute was included. And then they did state that the city is intending to issue a procurement for recycling services. So I'll be waiting to see that when that comes out. Other than that, that's all, Mr. Schmerl.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few. I also wanted to thank DPW. I think this has been a pretty busy winter for them. There's been a number of snow events. And I really appreciate the great job that they've been doing in getting the, the city cleaned up quickly for people to be able to, to travel around. I just wanted to quickly address what people have brought up during citizens' participation about me calling in to the meeting last week. I have occasionally had to do that if I'm, if I'm sick and not able to be here. As I mentioned, if you, if you weren't able to hear from last week through the phone that I have two kids in daycare. So it's constantly one illness after the other. And I've never been as sick as I have over the past year. And so if there ever is a time that, that I've called in, it's because I absolutely don't feel that I can make it in. But I do still want to do my duty here on council and participate in the meeting if I'm able to. I have lost my voice a number of times, too, that I've been struggling with. So if I didn't join in via the phone, then it was because I didn't have a voice and literally could not talk on, on the phone. And I mean, I shouldn't have to explain all this, but I am, just so that you know that it's, you know, if there are important votes on the table, they're, they're all important to me. So it's, it's not like certain. all important to me. So it's, it's not like certain meetings that I choose to call into or not. But I do think it's a, it's good that we have that option to still be able to participate. I know that it can be flawed, so I apologize if you were not able to hear me over the phone with, with what I stated last week. I believe it did come out clear on, on ECTV. So that's, I think, how the majority of people are able to, to view the meeting and listen to it. But, you know, if there's anything else that we can do in the future so that it's, you know, able to come across a bit clearer through the speakers, then perhaps we can, we can look into that. It's, it's really not ideal. It's not the way I'd like to join the meeting. I'd rather be here in person. But like I said, I was not physically able to, to do that last week. And then one other thing that I want to touch on, which I did last week as well, so a number of the, the pieces that are in Sixth Order tonight, which are the raises that everyone is, is referring to, I just figured I'd comment on it now rather than at the point that they're brought up in Sixth Order because, you know, kind of lumping them together as, as being pay increases. So I do believe that the ones that were proposed last week are fair and reasonable. And it is, I think, an awkward and uncomfortable position to be in, having to, you know, include raises and pay increases for positions that, that you're in, even if it won't take effect for me or if it's for a future position. That could, that could still be difficult, but that is the way that it's, that it's, it's written. And so that we're the ones that, that have to, to do that, unfortunately. And the positions that are receiving increases, these are all elected. This is the correct time or the, the time that we're able to do that for, for the future. And many, well, all these positions have not had raises in many years, some several decades. So if, if not now, then, then when? If us as a council, if we're willing to do it now, then, then I, I think that we should. I think that it is deserved that these positions should be, should be paid more, even if it's for, you know, future, future council members or future mayor. And I also think that it could make elected positions more attractive for more candidates to, to run for. And I think that's a good thing when, when there are, there are more candidates. And as for the mayor's pay specifically, I think it's embarrassingly low and lower than other positions within the city. So to have your, you know, top executive making lower than, than other positions, I think is, is an embarrassment. And we were not asked to, to increase it. So, you know, I don't want anyone thinking that. And I don't see it as a reward either. The way that I view it is how I have with past budgets that we have passed that have included pay increases for positions. And I just don't see this as different. I think that pay increases are appropriate for city positions. So that's, that's my standing on it. And just wanted to be able to provide that, that full explanation. That's all that I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McCandless, do you have any motions or comments?
I have a couple comments with regards to questions I've asked for weeks and even a month or two. So I finally got some type of response. I'm not sure if I'm happy with them, but I want to report them out. The first one being crosswalks and the mandated signage that are required in a school zone. All right, so I was back and forth, didn't receive any responses, but I kept asking about this school-wide or citywide school safety assessment being conducted collaboratively with PennDOT and our city engineers. So here's the response I got. "All school zone crosswalks across Grant were freshly painted in fall of 2024." I don't know about that. I, you know, that's yet to be seen. "The traffic team began installing signs in school zones in December to meet PennDOT's requirements." Isaac, Charles Sumner, John Adams, St. Clair, St. Paul are complete. I still think that there's some, there's some, like Lincoln Jackson, I don't, I'm not sure if the crosswalks and signage is done yet. But here it states that they're all done. And other schools are being scheduled. Maybe that's it. Okay, so Riley Associates, and it's the second quarter, at the end of the second quarter. I have grades due tomorrow. So Riley Associates will begin school zone traffic studies this month. So I don't know if this traffic study is the assessment that they're referring to in collaboration with PennDOT. I don't know. I've still yet to see this, to see this. So, "The school zone studies are two-part, the engineering evaluation of the area surrounding the school, and the separate evaluation to determine if additional crosswalk signage is warranted. These will take a few months to complete. Studies for schools that require PennDOT approval will be then, will then be submitted to the state. We will update council when Riley has completed their evaluation." So the PennDOT approval, I'm not understanding that. I didn't know that that's a requirement. I thought that was just something that is mandated. We don't need their approval because it's mandated. And, you know, maybe working with the school district and doing an assessment would be more beneficial in getting this work done. So I'll wait for this evaluation from Riley and Associates, and we'll see. So secondly, I've been asking about Rubicon, all right? And the retention of them and their software, and how that was contractually done. It didn't come before us. Did it go through the IT department? So I, I got, okay, so I got an answer on that. So the Rubicon contract will be renewed using the IT budget. The contract has not been enacted at this time, but the city has negotiated the contract pricing. Once the legislation and contract are prepared, it will be provided to us. So we finally get an answer. We haven't been asking for it since before Christmas. I don't know why that was that hard to tell us. So it has to come before us, and it should. So I'm glad that's cleared, cleared up. Then it went on to say, they went on to say, once the, you know, it will be provided to council. "The Scranton DPW launches optimized routes for the GPS Guided Refuge Collection System in December of '24. This launch day was chosen by Refuge Department employees as the date in which they wanted to optimize their daily routes and began collecting under the improved route system. The routes were tested, edited, and verified through additional runs, the working day and some overtime shifts in the months of October and November prior December launch." So we were never told the official launch. We've been asking when they're going to roll it out again because the past two times it wasn't successful. But I guess this is when they rolled it out, which was in November. So we asked that question, it was never answered. "Since the launch, launch of optimized routes, the Refuge Department has noticed an increase in the efficiency of the daily trash routes. Drivers have also been logging their issues to consistently improve the system." So, okay, so we got some information. Mr. Waldenberg, would you, I'd rather have, I'd rather have administration come in and let's discuss this before they send down this legislation. All right, because I've heard different things from different people in the city about Rubicon wasn't effective. They had, the drivers and employees had to go redo the work that Rubicon did. They kind of said that a little bit here, but I think we need to bring them in if that's a possibility before we renew or some type of contract to retain this software.
I'll send the invite, sir.
Please do that. Thanks. And then, okay, so the complaint, another complaint I brought up, and there was two complaints. They combined it into one and responding to this. So, you know, the one complaint I brought up, again, it was probably before the holidays, about stray dogs on Main Avenue and West Granton, South Main Avenue, or people walking them without leashes. So that's an issue. It's a violation. But in addition to that, I also said that folks came to me and said, and this is like maybe a week and a half ago, that, you know, there's stray dogs out there in this cold weather, and this person supposedly, you know, supposedly talked to the mayor, and the mayor said that they're going to take some action. But the problem is, okay, so we just, tonight, we're going to approve, reapprove a lease utilizing one of our old firehouses for stray cats and dogs, and, but they can't kennel them there. All right, so the issue lies where this, this young lady reached out to me, and her concern is that these dogs, when they're picked up, especially in the cold by state animal control, there's nowhere to take them. And, and the mayor said, I guess, and I'm just taking the word of the lady here, that they're working on that. So the only, the only response that got to that combined question is, this question will be referred to animal control. So animal control just controls the animals that, in the city that, that need to be controlled. The question lies is, is what's the solution for these dogs? Because Griffin Pond doesn't put dogs down anymore. So the stray dogs, like the cats, we got to come to some type of, find some type of solution to handle them better and house them, especially in this type of weather if they're found. All right, so could you reiterate that a little bit? And thank you for this information, but what do we do with dogs that are caught? Where do they go? Were they, are they kenneling them anywhere? Because I know, like I said, the legislation tonight is just a lease for the offices and not kenneling. If you can please clarify that question for me.
I will, sir.
All right, so tonight, Mrs. Hordowans, she brought, Mrs. Hordowans brought up a very important point about Code Blue. It's not the first time. I might be wrong, but it might, someone else might have referred to the same, same issue. I know tomorrow morning's going to be colder than today. And at what time is going to be the coldest? Like 8 o'clock? 7, 8 o'clock, minus 1? And so the Code Blue, and we all know, I even see the postings on Facebook and the social media, and thank God, there's some places for these homeless to go during this type of weather. And so, but your point's well made, like, okay, decision process. Who decides at 8 o'clock you're gone? Especially tomorrow, if that's the coldest. There should, there should be some leeway or some language or some part of this process where they're more accommodating based on the weather. I mean, Code Blue is Code Blue, but the difference between last week, it was very cold, and this week is, is 10 degrees, especially tomorrow, or maybe 15, 20 degrees, especially with the wind chill. So, Mr. Waldenberg, could you reach out to administration and ask them if, you know, let's take a look at it? This is a valid point brought up tonight. Let's take a look at it. You know, different circumstances, maybe, you know, these times could be adjusted for, for events, or Arctic blast like we received this week. All right?
I will, sir.
Thank you. And Jackson Street in Maine, corner Jackson in Maine, it is an issue. Sometimes it's, you know, it's taken care of, and then it goes back to the way it was. And this vehicle, obviously, is an issue. So, Mr. Waldenberg, could you please alert code enforcement and the SPD to take, you know, together to take a look at this? Because it's an issue that they both should, should be able to take care of for us.
I'll send them out tomorrow.
All right, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCandless. I'm also going to comment on the shelter. Due to the extreme cold that we've been having, the shelter has been experiencing like a lot more use this year than it, than it has in the past years, and which we often have to have a city employee there from Parks and Rec to be in that building at all times. So naturally, our overtime for that is going to be up again for, for down there because we are way ahead of last year already. And I believe the times are, you can go in at 8:00 PM, but you have to be out at 7:00 AM. I believe it's even earlier.
Oh, wow.
But I believe Keystone Mission are the ones that run this. And I think their last time we asked about this was when this closes, because this closes to the homeless because it then becomes open to the shelter after it's cleaned. Or I'm not, I'm not open to shelter, open to the public after it's cleaned. So I don't know how that all works, but we will find out from Keystone Mission. I believe their building then opens up when they leave down at Providence Road, but I'm not sure exactly the times. But we will find out to correct all of that and make sure that somewhere has somewhere to go in the morning. It's the coldest time, at 7:00 in the morning. I don't want to go out at 7:00 tomorrow morning. The other, I want to also thank our DPW for all the work they did with this past snowstorm, and especially this year, salting and plowing all of the courts and alleys. I've seen them throughout the entire city. This is the first time I've seen it, and I, I couldn't tell you how long, but I drove through most of South Side, and because I couldn't believe that, they're, actually, the salt was down before the snowstorm. And, and then they were plowing. So I thank them for doing that and keeping the roads all clear. They did a great job this time. And also, the city employees all report to work in the city of Scranton. There was no one working from home. That, that ended a while back. And as far as the splash pad being the only thing at Nag Park, we've gone through this a million times. There's a splash pad, and there's the activity pool going in right now. They're doing underground piping right now. Nothing has changed. So I don't know why we're, we're going off course with that, again, saying it's not going to happen. That first pool and the splash pad and the pickleball courts, all are funded. The second phase was the lap pool, and we're still working on that one. And lastly, I want to also thank our, the Scranton Police Department for all the work they have done removing all the abandoned and junk cars. I remember in November, December, they were in the Hill Section and South Scranton and heavily patrolling that area and moved over 130 cars from that area. And I believe now they are actually up in West Side, in West Granton, because I've heard them up there to begin towing a lot of cars up there. So it's great to see them to removing all of those, all of that blight, because cars are, you know, abandoned cars and junk cars are just more blight in our city. So I thank them for moving all of that stuff along. That's all I have, Mr. McCandless, or Mr. Waldenberg.
That's okay.
5B, for introduction and ordinance, amending the lease agreement with Street Cats and Dogs, Inc. for the property located at Ash Street Firehouse, 1409 Ash Street, to extend the term for an additional 12-month period.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
Under question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
Sixth Order, 6A, reading by title, filed to Council Number 50, 2025, in ordinance, ratifying the establishment of a no parking zone along the easterly and westerly side of the 300 and 400 blocks of Cedar Avenue to conform with PennDOT specifications for adequate site distance.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
Under question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, and so move.
6B, reading by title, filed to Council Number 51, 2025, in ordinance, amending filed to Council Number 7 of 2013, by increasing the salary of the position of mayor to $95,000 effective January 1, 2026.
You've heard reading by title of item 6B. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6B pass reading by title.
Second.
Under question?
Under question. I went into great detail last week, is why I'm opposing this, this increase. I won't elaborate on it again. It's just, I don't have an appetite for it. People are still struggling, and it's just, I don't feel good about it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No. No.
The ayes have it, and so move.
6C, reading by title, filed to Council Number 52, 2025, in ordinance, increasing the salary of the position of city council persons to $18,000 effective January 1, 2026.
You've heard reading by title of item 6C. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6C pass reading by title.
Second.
Under question?
Under question, the same. I, you know, people around me are struggling. I can't go anywhere without hearing how, how bad it is. And, and for me to vote on, even if it won't be my raise or increase, a 44% increase for, for council, I can't, I just, in good conscience, I cannot.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, and so move.
Sorry, no.
6D, reading by title, filed to Council Number 53, 2025, in ordinance, increasing the salary of the position of tax collector to $72,000 effective January 1, 2026.
You've heard reading by title of item 6D. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6D pass reading by title.
Second.
Under question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, and so move.
Seventh Order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 172, 2025, amending Resolution 6, 2024, entitled, Approving the Intermunicipal Transfer of Restaurant Liquor License Number 58619, currently owned by Calandies Cafe and Restaurante, Inc., and located at 36 Pike Street, Carbondale, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18407, to Warney Dalton LLC, located at 515 Center Streets, Granton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18503, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, to amend the restaurant liquor license number to read R... to amend the restaurant liquor license number to read R7575.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
Under question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 173, 2025, ratifying and approving an intergovernmental agreement of cooperation and memorandum of understanding between the city of Scranton and Lackawanna County for the creation of a comprehensive community violence intervention and prevention program.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
Under question?
Under question. I just wanna mention, I'm happy that this collaboration is taking place. I think we need to be working together on this. This is not just a Scranton problem, and so I'm glad that we're doing this, and this is, you know, just one step and one effort towards working on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 174, 2025, reappointment of David E. Falchek, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the Board of Ethics effective September 1st, 2024. Mr. Falchek will be appointed to a three-year term scheduled to expire August 31st, 2027.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
Under question?
Under question. I just wanted to thank Mr. Falchek for already serving on the sport and appreciate his interest in serving again.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. I also would like to thank Mr. Falchek for continuing his service to the city of Scranton. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth Order, no business at this time.
If there's no further business at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.